Okay, everyone, we're going to get started with an informational session this evening. We're going to be going over the HVAC for the Masonic and then also the proposed budget cuts from city staff.
So mayor and council, we have Scott as mentioned, we have two presentations tonight. San Temple HVAC updates, the hundred percent drawings are complete. Staff has indicated to council previously that once that step was complete, a presentation will be given to council, hence the meeting tonight. We have our consultant from Miller Dunwoody joining us via Zoom, who I'll introduce here shortly. Following the presentation by Miller Dunwoody, I'll provide a review of the historic structures report for the Masonic Temple. That was requested during our August budget meetings, so I'll give a recap or update on HSR. Following the Mason Temple presentations, again, as the mayor alluded to, staff will present the 2022 budget reduction recommendations. So with that, we have Kelly Mastin on Zoom from Miller Dunwoody. Kelly is a consultant for the HVAC project. She is going to give about a 15 minute presentation on that project. So with that, Kelly, take it away.
Hi, good evening. Can I share my screen?
Yep, I think we gave you access.
There we go, can you see it?
Got it.
Okay. I'm going to turn my camera off, so you don't see the side of my face the entire time. Like, whatever. Okay. So, good evening, and thank you for having me here to talk about the one known as Masonic Temple HVAC upgrade project. So as Chad noted, I'm Kelly Mastin, I'm an architect and project manager with Miller Dunwoody, and I make corp was our engineering consultant on this project. So the primary focus of this project is to provide cooling and ventilation to the occupied spaces of the building. And this required three new air handling units to be installed in the basement, as you can see highlighted on the floor plan. And the basement is really the main hub for all of the duct work, and you can kind of see how it's everywhere, and it's a little bit of a spaghetti junction down there, but it's required to get air everywhere that we needed to. In addition to the new air handling units and duct work inside the building, a new larger air cooled chiller will be located outside in the same location as the current one. This photo shows your approximate location and how there are some laurel bushes that will be planted around it to provide some natural screening. I do want to take a minute here just to talk about your existing boilers, because they are still operational, but they're nearing the end of their expected serviceable life, so this is probably a good time to take care of them. The project has an alternate bid included to replace them, and doing this would also provide fresh air into the new air handling units. The existing boilers would be salvaged or salvaged and returned to the city because you have these same boilers installed in multiple locations, and it would be good to salvage their parts for future repairs in other buildings. Six new lubebers would be added to the building, there'd be five in the alley and one around the northwest corner. And so they're highlighted on this image and plan in yellow and aqua. In addition to that, two existing lubebers that are facing the street, as you can see right here and here, would be removed, and one of the windows from the alley would be relocated to this louver opening to have that cohesive look. And the basement one would be infilled with the masonry products, so it would be the same as what's adjacent to it. And this was a requirement of SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office that we worked with throughout the project. We will also be providing code required stage ventilation on top of the roof. It was there originally, so we'll be opening that again in the original location. For reference, this is your roof, this is the roof of the stage house, and this is this little doghouse on top of that area, so it's really high up, you really can't see it from the street. Okay, moving back inside. One of the ways for adding ventilation and conditioning to the building is the use of displacement ventilation, and this increases occupant comfort and indoor air quality. Another benefit is we can feed all these locations from the basement quite easily. The photo on the left shows an example of this used in the school, it's kind of built into this book cabinet underneath the window. And on the right, an example of how we'd be using it in the auditorium on the first floor. So, you know, the trim at the base would match. We'd add additional trim at the top, so just kind of as a wood budge, and it just ends up looking like a built in feature of the room. So if you're looking at the first floor, all the areas that are highlighted in this yellow color will have this new displacement ventilation system for air conditioning. And the system's really preferred on the first floor because it allows for future flexibility, and I know the first floor, you know, in the future might change. And at some point, if you wanted to remove all those suspended ceilings that are in most of these rooms, bordering it as well as the auditorium, it would be an easy way to return the building's first floor to its historic appearance without having to do a lot of reworking of this new mechanical system because that structure's already in. See, the drawings that are overlaid and bubbled here are showing, as you just saw, this one from the auditorium, but another example of how these displacement units would be added to the building where you have this decorative wings coating, for example, it would just be a projection, it would be built in the same method as the existing wings coating, so we're really just trying to match into the aesthetic the building already has. Moving up to the second floor, we see that there are some displacement units mostly just at the entry area to the theater, and then also these side platforms facing the audience. And, let's see. Moving to the next slide, this really shows a more comprehensive approach to the conditioning of the theater. So, in addition to the displacement units in the corner, there's a grill on the face of the step and the side platforms. And there's also floor grills within the stage to provide cooling for the performers. All of these areas are fed by duct work that's installed below the stage. So that gave us a really great place to be able to run to these spots. And all of these systems work towards achieving the goal for the space, which is air that is comfortable, non-drafty, and quiet. And to do this, we need to make sure the air is supplied at a low rate of speed. So it's slow air, so we have to provide kind of a quantity of it, but it starts low and it returns high. Here's a photo of the front of the stage, so we'd have grills in these aqua areas, platform in the step riser, the yellow displacement diffusers, and then the grills on the stage are hidden from view. Looking in the back of the theater, the aqua line shows where we'd actually have another set of grills to provide fresh air at the balcony level. And the red is showing our returns at the back that takes air from the entire seating area theater, the the stage area has its own return in the back corners. It was important in locating these returns to keep them low on the wall, so they do not interfere at all with the decorative stenciling you do have present in that area. So this is all been talking mostly about air conditioning, but I do want to mention again, coming back to heat, the building has existing perimeter heat that will remain, so here's a couple of rooms showing, you know, different sizes and colors that will all stay in place. Other rooms will be reusing their existing duct work and corner shafts, so a handful of rooms on the first floor are highlighted in blue. And also, let's note on this plan, there's these darker rectangles and corners, and that's showing where we have existing shafts that will be reusing. However, some of these shafts will be keeping in the same location but enlarging, and in that case, will they be constructed to match the existing colors, materials, and decorative trends? Again, just keeping with the historic aesthetics. Moving to the second floor, you see that we talked about the theater already, so that was that was mostly supplied underneath the stage where this is displacement diffusers. But now the rest of the theater is more, or the rest of the second floor, I'm sorry, is served by duct work, which is concealed within sockets, so if we look at these plans, these kind of darker areas are showing where new sockets will be located at the ceiling. It was important when we worked with SHPO that they were located in the least visible non-public areas as possible, which it's hard to do in a theater space. But in the example of this, they wanted to maintain for sure this hallway, so nothing was allowed to cut across or be installed at the ceiling. So what we have is this set of ducts that's running, that's feeding not only the spaces to the south of them, but also through wall ventilation. So that's an example of how we dealt with that on the second floor. Looking at the third floor, it's very similar to the second floor where we have these new sockets going in. But you also see, this is where that riser is on the third floor balcony where we're providing some additional air to keep some more fresh cool air entering that space for the theater attendees. I did want to point out this duct that's highlighted in yellow as it's an example of the needling through the building that happened to accommodate all the ventilation needs. So locating this return duct in the theater, or should say locating it, getting it back to the basement to the air handling unit was really tricky, and we went through multiple iterations of how to make that happen, and in the end, it starts, you know, low at this balcony floor, it goes up through this existing shaft through the attic into the stage house to a duct that takes it back to the basement. So it was one of the ways we had to get creative to not impact the Now, the architectural work on this project was primarily just in support of the mechanical changes and making sure that the work is compliant with the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. This corner of the first floor plans just shows notation included in the drawings, identifying all materials present from floor to ceiling. Anything contributing to the historic integrity of the space is highlighted, so any work in these areas will be sensitive to patch with matching existing materials and details to preserve integrity of the historical features. As Chad can attest, we had a very extensive reviews with SHPO at the 30, 60, and 90% design review, design completions to ensure the project was on track to receive their approval. Now everyone's favorite slide, right, the numbers. And I do want to begin with the following caveat, because the numbers were calculated in late July, and they do not include escalation because we do not yet have a construction start date. And Tom in our office put these numbers together, he does all of our opinions of probable cost, and he's normally very good at predicting what we'll end up seeing in the final bidding. However, the supply chain issues of 2020 into 2021 have definitely thrown some unknowns into everyone's ability to estimate industry wide, so all of that said, the project estimate from July 2021 was at 1.32 million, and this doesn't include a 10% owner's contingency, which you can see right here, which we would strongly advise keeping. On the right side of the screen here, you can see how this breaks down. So selective demolition, woods, and openings were relatively small numbers, and you're going to see the larger numbers in the areas where you're probably expecting them, the finishes, so that would include the sockets and walls and painting, HVAC, and electrical. There's also a breakdown here of the larger HVAC numbers, so you see, you know, the duct work came in at 267,000, and controls for 134, demo 118, air handling units 113. And all of that added together, and that includes the cost of continuous charge, 1.32. So, thank you. Do you have any questions? I think if there's anything. I can't hear you if you're discussing anything. Okay.
Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, great.
What I was saying was, I couldn't see the top two numbers of the last slide because your lovely face was there. Is it possible you could just read those to us? I think it's wooden, plastic, and selective demolition.
Yes, so selective demolition was $16,600, and wooden, plastic came to $4,700.
You.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
To tell you the truth, I don't understand too much about displacement ventilation, so if you could talk about that a little bit, I'd appreciate it.
Let's go back. So this system is, I don't know where his name came from, if I'm being totally honest with you, it's just, it's a system that's providing ventilation, so there is duct work running to it, if I go. If we look at the basement plan, so we have all of these little guys that are poking up through the floor. So it works super well on our first floor plan because we have the space available to us in the basement to come up into the first floor at all of these locations without needing to have a large chase or a large duct or socket even in corners, because these units are so small, it only projects from the wall like four to six inches. And it allows a large area of coverage because each one is just taking a smaller amount of air, and I'm not explaining this super well to you, I'm explaining it from the advantages I see as an architect using it in this project, I'm not I'm not sure exactly how to explain the full mechanical engineering background or benefit of it. But it worked really well for us in these locations because primarily on the first floor where we Chad, I don't know how you want to explain this, but we're working with the Friendship Center now. A lot of these rooms have a suspended acoustic tile ceiling, but not knowing if the Friendship Center is going to stay there for how long in the future, that, I mean, ideally SHPO really wants to see these spaces return to their historic appearance. They want those ceilings down, they want to have exposed plaster, and you know, you'd need different light fixtures and all of that. This was a way we could plan for that in the future without having to do all of that work. So we were able to put in new, you know, mechanical duct work along these walls without it changing anything at the ceiling. Does that help a little bit? I'm sorry I didn't explain the mechanical benefit of it, it's more why it worked well for this project in this location.
Well, I will, I will accept that and look further enlightenment as we go along. Thanks, Kelly.
Okay, thanks.
Kelly, there aren't any other questions from council at this point, so thank you for that. You described that well. I think the key component is that obviously this increases our occupant comfort and indoor air quality, which is something that currently is not happening, and so I'll kind of segue right now. Kelly's going to stay in the line, I promised her, even though Miller Dunwoody did the HSR, we wouldn't ask her questions because she did not complete that project, but she's going to stay in the line just in case. The indoor air quality is important, though, as it relates to what I'm going to talk about tonight, because we currently don't have that air quality in the second, third floor, so the space is unusable. That's been exasperated really with COVID as well, you got to make sure that we have good air exchange and air quality in those spaces, and that's really why we're presenting the HVAC and those diffusers the way that we did. So Tina, if you could bring up the Masonic Temple, that would be great. So during the August budget meetings, it was mentioned just to do a review of the historic structures report that was completed for the Masonic Temple and discuss projects that have been done and projects that are still in the hopper. And so I know that for some of you that are newer on council, we certainly kind of use this comment like HSR and refer to it, but I think it's important that we do that review. It's going to be hard to see on that screen, but can everybody else see the screens that are in front of you? Okay. So Tina, I guess I'm just going to have to give you a cue, you can turn. So the historic structures report really started in 2013, the city received Minnesota State Historical Society grant. In other words, we received legacy funding to do the historic structures report. And this is really driven by our review of the theatrical drops and roof concerns that were presented, if those of you that were on council, you know that we had an issue with the rigging system that was in very grave disrepair. And so that prompted us to write this grant for the HSR, really to do a complete building review. So the HSR was a needed component also for future granting, which we were successful in getting. But we needed, if we were going to apply for any more legacy dollars, this HSR was a good component to have. So the HSR really does the following, it provides the historical context of the property, and it provides a description, assessment, and recommendation of the site, the exterior of the structure, interior of the structure, code and accessibility issues, building treatments and the approach, and then probable options of cost. So the next slides are kind of color coded, and hopefully it comes out clear because it's complicated as it relates to what the HSR suggests we do, and then what we have done as a city, and so I've tried to color code them to give you sort of the background and timeline for when projects were completed. But the historic structures report had the following findings. It had stated that immediate priority to be completed in 2014 were the following. We needed to complete a roof and framing review, which was complete, that's why it's in white, and a review of the rigging system to determine the use of the drops and that specific rigging system. That was complete in 2014. And then immediate priority also was to review the floor framing. I have that in red because we have not completed that project to date. The findings said that there were also high priorities which should be completed in 2015 and 16. I put these in yellow because the lists of yellow projects means that they are, have been completed, we just didn't get them done in that timeline, but we did complete these projects. The roof and structural reinforcement was complete, roughly 540,000. We did replace the rigging system that was completed during what we called the theatrical upgrades. That was approximately 1.8 million. We did complete foundation and wall repair and joints. Basically, that's another way to say that we've tuck pointed part of the building, we have not done the entire building, but we did do certain sections, we received a legacy grant to do that work. 424,000 was the total project cost. Again, in red because it was a high priority to review the floor framing that has not been completed. Medium priorities are projects that should be completed in 2017 to 2022. We have a plus there because the HSR says basically in the three to five years you should do these items or as programmatically required. So this is where the HVAC system shows up within the HSR report. Of course, we have not done that yet. Electrical upgrades were noted, that we needed a normal power distribution, fire alarm system, and security system. Now, these are in blue because, another color code, with the theatrical upgrades, there was some electrical upgrades that were done, but it's not complete. Same with the foundation and walls, as I just mentioned, this was a medium priority through the HSR. Again, we did some tuck pointing, not all. And again, just to reemphasize, we have not done the review of the floor framing. Low priority, all in red, these are items that have not been completed, but the HSR suggested that they be completed between 2022 and 2024 or as programmatically needed. It was replaced, the windows, we need to continually monitor the driveway, parking, sidewalk, and steps of the building, and that's really primarily for water intrusion. Not so much aesthetics or accessibility, although that's important, but more for water intrusion. We should replace doors and doorways, exterior, wall and ceiling finishings, this is certainly important, but also aesthetic. Carpet, tiles, cleaning of walls, and then also decorative features. Decorative features, though, are also really important in this regard, signage in the building. So we got to make sure that we have proper safety signage for exits in the building, but also signage, where do you enter? It's a big building, where do I go once I get in? And certainly refinishing some of the original work and other aesthetic items. The HSR does suggest that if the city should choose that there is an organ in the facility, and it needs to be refurbished, it's inoperable right now. If we choose to refinish the organ, obviously a decision of the city, but it was listed within the HSR. Again, goes without saying, I just kept review of the floor framing as well. The findings also indicate city building code, and that is really dependent on use. So the HSR said, well, we have these immediate high, medium, and low priorities. But we also have to keep in mind that dependent on use, the city should look at stairs and exits, door hardware, so again, it shows up again both interior and exterior now. Bathroom renovations on second and third floor may be needed. And third floor has a kitchen, and depending upon that use, it would need to be updated for, to meet building code. Then, although we need to do a floor framing review, that's going to tell us something about the floors on second and third floor, and then we would need to complete the floor framing project. And again, that all is determined on capacity and use of the building. So again, hopefully it's not too confusing, color coded these as well. The white gives you options of probable costs, again, based on 2014 numbers. So this is now getting close to eight years old, but again, floor framing review, 20,000. Well, I did upgrade, update the HVAC number as Kelly had provided tonight, 1.3. Remember, we also have design costs that were not included in her price, so that estimate is 1.5 million. HSR said we had 460,000 of electrical upgrades, again in yellow because some of those are complete. Wall repair, joint openings, tuck pointing, again, estimated 200,000, some of that is complete. Windows 130, again, et cetera, et cetera, I'm not going to read all these. Again, organ is unknown. If we go to the next slide, we do know that the bathroom upgrades are about 220,000. We know that because during the theatrical upgrade process, we had bid alternates for the bathrooms. So we have at least a 2019 cost estimate at 220. The code issues, again, vertical exits, kitchen, security system, et cetera, floor framing, which is a large project, are unknown. And again, they're considered unknown under the historic structures report because, again, until a scope is determined, it's hard to put a price to that. I think I mentioned this in August during the budget meetings, but in relationship to the HVAC I think I mentioned this in August during the budget meetings, but in relationship to the HVAC project. We're not at the end of the renovation or rehab of this facility. Uh, we're really at the midpoint. Um, the HVAC certainly will open up the building for use as we heard tonight, bringing that air quality. Uh, we did do some bathroom upgrades, so accessibility is covered in certain in those areas. So the building certainly could be used. But again, further work needs to be complete. Again, to re emphasize in August, I think there was a question about, well, how much is remaining? Where we put an estimate at 2.5 to 3 million in future upgrades. And it's important to note that many of those do not include the first floor. So again, determining whether or not the friendship center moves into a community center facility. Some of these costs are not included in that estimate. So that's generally the review of the HSR. If you have any questions, I'd certainly do my best to answer them.
Thank you, uh, good report Chad. Uh, there's been grants and things that have been spent on the uh, on the project already. How much of city of Winona tax dollars has been spent on the building? Do you have that figure?
Yep, we've spent uh, just shy of 3 million. And a and roughly 400,000 has come in in grants. So total is about 3.3, 3.4 million total spent tax dollar by uh. City Winona tax dollar is just shy of that of that 3 million.
Okay, thank you.
How, over how many years is that? Because that's not every year.
No, uh, that's starting in 2014 with some money we had to put in for the HSR all the way to today.
Okay.
Through the theat- through the theatrical upgrades.
Okay.
Again, that theatrical upgrade was the largest project that was the 1.8 million. We did that through the 2017 recreation bond.
Chad, can you, uh, since I wasn't on council at the time, what what year did the city purchase that building?
Uh, we purchased the building in 1979.
And do you have any idea how or what kind of updates or repairs have been made over that? I mean, were there changes that were made when the building was purchased?
Uh, mayor and council, as I like to sort of joke, I was in first grade. When they bought it. No, uh, in all seriousness. Other than modifications to the first floor. There were very few or limited improvements to the second and third floor from 1979 to. Early 2000s.
So a lot of what we have done over the past few years is like 40 years of deferred maintenance.
Correct.
Thank you.
Go ahead, George.
Yeah, just one question now. What money is available or grants or legacy grants or whatever that we could. Receive if the senior friendship center stays there, is there some kind of a. Difference in that whether it stays or not stays?
Uh, mayor and council, uh, that's a tough one. I think with the recent federal announcements. That the community concept really hits a lot of markers. If we join really our youth and adult programming. Um, certainly, the flip side to that would be that. We certainly would be eligible because of of really the the HSR, the exterior work that we've done. Uh, city commitments to the building. Uh, it's in opportunity zone. There is options then for us still to receive state grant funding or uh, continued legacy funding. And again, we'd have to follow as Kelly's mentioned, hence the first meeting, we'd have to follow a lot of shipo guidelines. If we want to capture some of that legacy dollars again.
Thank you.
Um, the senior center is probably going to stay there for an extended period of time. Because although we have as a previous council agreed to. Building a new facility for them, we haven't actually been able to move forward on that for a variety of reasons. So the senior center is at least for, let's say, the next five years likely to stay in that location, correct? And this HVAC corrects some of the deficiencies on the main floor as well as the second and third. Because I think we have some heating and air conditioning issues just with the function of the main floor. So. That ARPA money or grants would at least in this case work that way simply because. The senior center is not moving next year or two years or probably even five years from now, correct?
That's correct.
Just wanna make sure.
And again, to emphasize that point, Michelle, it's a good point. I mean, from design to construction, if even even today, council would say, okay, we want to pursue this community center concept. Obviously, construction and and move is years away. So you bring up a good point, they 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 are going to stay for several years there depending upon that situation. I would just comment that if we would move forward with the HVAC through. Uh, ARPA funding dollars and again, finance director, myself have to do more review and more discussion with council about that as an option. The HVAC renovation project needs to have the building vacant in order to construct the project. And so we know that we've got some concerns with where we provide those services for our older adults if this project would go forward.
Go ahead, Evan.
Um, am I correct Chad in uh, noting that we're also by not having these updates? We're losing up on, we're losing out on rental revenue of the building?
Uh, mayor and council, that's correct. So we. With what I would call the. Fix to the HVAC system on the first floor, which we currently did, well, which we did this previous June. That is not supplying the fresh air and air exchange in the second and third floors. So we are not allowing anybody to occupy those second and third floor spaces. So events. Nonprofits, festivals, specifically arts organizations are not able to use that space currently.
Any other questions of anyone? No, okay, thanks, Shan, appreciate it.
Okay, uh, Kelly, thanks for hanging on the line. We're gonna transition to our 2022 budget, but I appreciate you uh, joining us on Zoom in a presentation tonight.
Yeah, thank you all.
Thank you, Kelly.
Okay, as uh. Tina starts the screen sharing, we're gonna transition into the 2022 budget. Okay, so uh, tonight, uh, we are between. The proposed and adopted phase of the budget process. So again, next slide. In August of 2021, uh, the council uh, tentatively approved uh, the annual budget. And then you, when you tentatively approve that budget, you bring it forward in September. So it's September 20th, the council approved a 5.2% levy increase. Including a budget reduction request of 590,000, again, that was coming from reserve funding. Tonight, uh, we are seeking tentative approval of the city manager's recommendation for budget reductions. In the amount of 590,000. On December 20th, assuming that you tentatively approve our recommendation tonight. You'll uh, do a final adoption of the tax levy and the 2022 budget. So Tina, we're gonna go one by one here. So this next slide is uh, budget adjustments as it relates to expenditures. And the first item that I want to mention is, uh, I'm proposing that we reduce employee services across the city by 193,041 dollars. So I'll get into some more details here in the next slide. We're recommending that we reduce our operating expenses across departments by 33,459. Uh, we're asking the council to revisit uh, the alternative response team contract in future years. Which means that we are recommending that in 2022, we do not fund that contract. Uh, that is a savings of 185,000. This time I would ask Chief Williams to come forward and he has a few remarks.
Mayor and council, keep it real brief because I know we're kind of stressed for time, but um, first and foremost, I want to thank everybody's time. Uh, to get us into the art program. Um, unfortunately, we've come to the impasse where we have budget on one hand. And we also have a very, very small pool of individuals that are qualified. To work as on the alternative response team. Um, what we ran into after um, the initial uh, conception of the art program and the committee working together and coming up and doing. All the heavy lifting, if you will, on this, getting the contract ready to go, getting the job placement put out there. Um, ultimately, what happened is we only received two applicants. And by we, I mean the partnership with police and and Hiawatha Valley. Um, they only received two applicants. Uh, one of those accepted the position and uh, we were able to to work with them and kind of start taking very, very small steps. Towards the implementation of the art program. Unfortunately, the second applicant initially accepted the position and then withdrew their name. And uh, was no longer employed, so we left, we're left with just the one person. Um, there's not been any uh, significant interest in the program. Um, it it hasn't taken off from the standpoint that we had anticipated. Um, we think the concept is outstanding and um, in terms of the adjustment, I would, I would prefer to say that we're going to pause. For right now with the art program, everything is in place. Um, we can pick it up again when the funding is available and hopefully um, a a hiring pool of of the qualified applicants that we're looking for there. We will continue to work strongly with the Hiawatha Valley Mental Health. Um, a- as we do now with their crisis intervention and and work with them on a call out basis. And hopefully um, as years uh, uh, come up or year, two years. And the money becomes more available, the applicant pool is better, um, we can reinstitute the plan and take it off pause and hit play. Any questions from anyone?
Pam, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, thank you for your report. Uh, do you have any idea why there has not been of wide degree, a high degree of interest in this program?
I, again, I think it's kind of indicative of what's happening across the entire United States, be it from uh, the. Food industry to the in the mechanical, to law enforcement, to everything. Um, there's, there's just no qualified applicants and I think the mental health profession, um, especially. Has been stressed for years, leading up to this, for the last 10 years, probably. We've been seeing a super increase in need and no services that are available. And we've, we found this locally with Winona Health and the closing of their behavioral medicine ward. Um, so that they don't have people to staff it. So I think it's just kind of the trend that's going on right now and hopefully that will reverse.
Okay, so it's a problem beyond our borders then?
That's correct.
Right, thank you.
George?
Uh, now, the the employee that accepted the job, uh, she will continually be employed by Hiawatha Valley.
Yes, that's my understanding, uh, we we've talked with Eric Severs um, about some of the problems, the trials and tribulations that we've been having. Um, and he's uh, has assured us that uh, the one individual that was hired for the alternative response team. Um, will subsequently be uh, employed through Hiawatha Valley.
And just for uh, for a refresher for all of us, that this person was not a city of Winona employee. Uh, she was employed by Hiawatha Valley Mental Health and we just contracted with them for that service, so.
That's correct.
Thank you, chief.
Any other questions for Chief Williams?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and the last item that's related to expenditures is actually an increase. We're suggesting an increase of 2,500 dollars. This is to uh, reaffirm our commitment to the Minnesota Great River Rail Commission. During August, I think there was some confusion about uh, extending our role or if we should continue on uh, within that project. We're recommending that we do and that we increase the budget by uh, 2,500. And again, the total in savings on the expenditures then equals uh, 409,000. Uh, moving to the next slide, uh, this uh, relates to uh, budget adjustments with uh, revenue. And the first one is a MINDOT easement acquisition. Tonight at the council, you're going to approve, uh, well, I should say, recommending that you approve. Uh, easement uh, acquisition, it's a good thing I caught myself. Easement acquisition through MINDOT is is likely to be complete. And the city will receive an additional 180,000 uh, dollars in 2022. Tonight, you are not seeing a a agenda item for that full 180, there will be a second item that comes forward. A projected total revenue 180. Uh, American Cruise Line's contract, it's a small amount, it's 5,000 dollars. Again, I'll admit during the budget process, this is comes through my department, we forgot to add in the American Cruise Line contract. And since that is a contract that's solidified, there is anticipated 5,000 dollars more in revenue. The last item actually is a reduction in revenue in library donations. I would, I would classify this as a budgetary item. Where we anticipate number of library uh, donations and how we budget for them on the revenue and expense side. Uh, we adjust every year through this budget process of reducing the 590, we relooked at that. We're actually adding 4,000 dollars back for a total of. Uh, 181,000 in additional revenue. If you take the 409 in expenditure reductions and you increase the revenue by 181. That is how we reach the 590,000. I do want to mention that the expenditure reductions are across many departments. Uh, police, fire, library, recreation, public works, and a small amount in inspections. Wanted to note that we've adjusted for employee benefits to current actual enrollment. So from August to now, we've been able to make adjustments to our benefits. That's how you see the number for employee service reductions. Uh, we did reduce the audit by 20,000 in 2022 because we are not required to conduct federal revenue audit this in 2022. So we have a savings and we made no adjustments to the port authority budget. Again, at the December 20th meeting, staff will provide the adopted budget and levy charts. And any additional information the city requests or the council requests. Regarding that, though, I do have two slides that may be hard to see on the screen, but we did provide those in front of you. The first one is the proposed budget and proposed levy. And again, this works in columns. The far left column is the fund number, then it goes left to right, of course, the the general fund title. And then tax levy dollar amount. So when we propose this budget on that top line, you see the tax levy at just over 7 million. Other revenue sources, 12 million. And that 590 is unfunded from reserve sources. So if we turn to the next slide. What we wanted to do tonight was to show to you that we have in fact made these reductions in the budget. And that you'll see the tax levy increase for the general fund. But that our total dollar amount in that first column remains the same because the council approved a 5.2 levy. Uh, 5.2% levy increase and we're not suggesting that we reduce that amount. We did highlight the areas where adjustments were made, I think I just referenced that. Obviously, general fund, police, fire, public works. You do see some reduction in recreation and library in a small adjustment in inspections. So you will receive a very similar chart to this without the highlighted area. Or without the areas highlighted on December 20th for final adoption. I did want to note that. Uh, appreciate all the help from department heads in this process. Finance director specifically. That I want to note that the 2022 adjustments, 590, is not just the 2022 budget. We talk about future years, 2023, 2024. And I wanted to note that the reduction of the nine proposed employees. Those will need to be reassessed annually and what vacancies and services are lost by those nine employees needs to be reassessed. As Chief Williams has pointed out, we're. As Chief Williams has pointed out, we're pushing, we're recommending pushing pause on the alternative response team. We should have a discussion in twenty twenty-three if we want to fund that. Again, I think that's the key word is we're pushing pause for twenty twenty-two. We look at equipment needs and capital projects. So again, this is just really to to reiterate, it's not just a singular focus on the twenty twenty-two budget. The recommendations have multiple year uh consequences. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy entertain them. And ultimately, before the council meeting starts, if you so choose, we would like a recommendation for tentative approval.
Any questions? Go ahead, George.
Uh, the copies with the Winona insignia on, uh, could we get, everyone get a copy of those which you had proposed for the budget reductions? Those we don't have, but we we do have these sheets here, so if that's possible, so.
Yes, I can do that.
And I would move for tentative approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Oh, you wanted to say something? Oh, I'm not opposed, but I did have a question.
Okay. So we're all in favor. Um, go ahead, Emily, sorry.
Um, I just wanted a clarification question, uh, Chad. For library, there was a four thousand dollar reduction in revenue. And then there were further, we had already been reducing the library budget, is that correct?
Correct, but there were more reductions in library services that are included in the five ninety.
Okay, um, I I guess I would just, you know, I I have a tentatively approved this uh new budget. But uh as a note for future years, I think that's, the library should be a priority for us to revisit as far as services and personnel, since that's one of our most public facing and most utilized services in the city.
I I, of course, approve this entirely too. I just want to thank you and Jessica and all the staff who went back and worked extra hard to find a way to reduce this rev- reserve funding. And I I have no problem with revisiting employees as long as we budget for them, if that tax rate um is appropriate to cover the expensive. I I think many of us will look at those employees and say, we want them back on the staff, but we need to fund them. So I look forward to that discussion for next year. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Anyone else? George?
I know this has been tough on all of you folks and uh yeah, it was showing and it was showing with us over here too, making the decisions. I know it was tough and uh probably one of the one of the toughest budgets I've been through, and I've been through a lot of them where we've had to reduce a million dollars plus and whatever it may be, but you folks all did a good job. Hats off to all of yous.
Thank you, George. Any other comments or questions? Okay, we will recess for about five more minutes and then we'll start the council meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.